What is that? Are we live? Um, well, we're live there and I guess are we?
Melissa Manderscheid. She's in for a second.
Okay, if everyone's settled now, we'll call a October 13, 2015 council meeting order. All council members present. Engineer Ryan. Melissa Manderscheid. As an engineer for Canyon Graven. Uh, citizens comments, if you have anyone that wants to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda.
I'd like to, if I could.
Step off to the podium and...
My name's Jack Karen, live here in town. And I'd like to, the council, uh, taking into consideration letting me have chickens. Along with all the other residents. So. Well, I'm supposed to plead my case or?
Do you have 27 good reasons why?
They eat wood ticks. They eat wood ticks.
Okay.
That should be reason enough right there.
Well, maybe we should have them just spread out over town and eat wood ticks for a few days and... Once a week, doesn't this go before the, um, plan permission for the car is rezoning or anything?
Well, this would be more of a general ordinance amendment if it was to be considered. His zoning is such that, um, it's different than when we had that rezoning up, you know, up on Second Street 30 because that was an area that was adjacent to where it was a larger lot had been historically. And so, it wasn't the same. Um, where he is is our true residential. And it wouldn't be a good idea, I mean, from a, you know, zoning standpoint to rezone your property because it's a spot zone, and that wouldn't be the way to handle this. The way to handle it would be look at the whole ordinance that covers animals and chickens and those kind of things because there would be a lot of other properties in the city that would be similar to yours. You know, that if they wanted chickens, we're not going to rezone every single property.
I'll state right up front that I am in favor of this and is actually growing currently among a lot of cities. I have quite a bit of information that I collected on this over a year or so ago. Through the mayor's association lists or what type of ordinances that other cities had and, uh... Did not see anyone did have this complaining of problems. But, of course, I'm only one out of four member councils, so I can't out of my own do this. I think some wrote it, put it in the ordinance a couple months ago, I don't remember it. Fairly recently, within the last six months of these.
I think we should have guidelines, otherwise we're going to have this every council meeting. Somebody's going to be coming and applying for whether the goats, we passed that one, chickens, more animals. I think we've got a set of pres- presidents and come with a... This is the guideline, you don't need to get guidelines?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, we have, I think we have to do that first.
And that's, that's where I've said I've got examples of the ordinances that other cities have put into, put in place. There are standards on the type of housing, how much room per bird, maximum number of birds, pretty universally, no roosters. And, uh...
How exposed they're in.
Exactly.
Smell?
No more, no outdoor butchering, which some people would do. Actually, most people that want to do this in town are either doing it strictly from a standpoint or eat for eggs. Either one of those would be acceptable, but it's got to be spelled out real clearly. Exactly what the standards are, it's got to be inspected by someone, that's got to be any ordinance whose responsibility it is to do the inspection, what the standards are. It's got to be some sort of a permit and along with that permit, there's going to be a D of some kind.
This has come up in front of the council before and is basically to turn down the... Um, and I would say it's a previous council, but what we would have to do is come up with some kind of draft language and what I would say at this point would be that it would be put on the agenda for the next meeting. And then if you want to move ahead with it, that's when you would say, tell us to go ahead and move ahead with it.
I'll volunteer to do some more research, get, pull up what I have and see if I can find some more examples of language that other cities have used in the metro area. This is getting quite common, actually. Um, and often, another thing that will go along with chickens is meat eating.
Eat what?
Meat eating.
Ah, yes, okay.
What are we going to do about dogs barking way up where we have to look at the neighbors too as to what they think about it? Because you have to keep your animals quiet, if you got a dog barking dog, that's a nuisance. Have to look at what the neighbors have to say. That's one, that's one reason why every ordinance I've seen specifies no roosters.
Are we going to have a work session on this one?
Um, we are going to have a work session in a couple of weeks to go over First Street feasibility study finding.
I think this would be a good, I think, for the work session.
If we could get the, if you can get the examples pulled together.
I will. So, I actually get on that this evening, except when we get out here, I'm going to have to listen and see if there's anything left of the date.
So, and I think I told you this on the phone though, this doesn't give you any kind of authorization to get chickens or do anything with them just because they're talking about an ordinance. Under the current statutes, it's still not legal. So, I want to be clear about that.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory to you?
Yes, very, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then we can move on to the agenda, are there any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Um, we have the appointment of another person, which I think you have on your... I stuffed this past out there, it's a historic preservation committee. Just liked how that added.
We could add that for the global Jerry's appointment today.
Yes, exactly. Something we need to add, correct?
Amendment.
Are you making that the last agenda item, or?
Uh, scene one.
Right.
Right after Jerry and his business?
That would become the...
Okay, is there going to be a move everything else down or?
I like software. You see one there, see two.
This is software.
I think you can number it however you want to.
Yeah. All right, good, thank you.
Anything else? General motion to accept the agenda as amended.
I will make that motion.
What was that, the second? On favor, I...
Aye.
Consent agenda, is there anything that should be moved from that or do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? So moved, second. On favor?
Aye.
Mayor, who did the motion and the second?
I did the...
So made motion and John Sessom. So, move on to presentations and public hearings. Acknowledge the great service that Scott Swenow did to the city as a member of the Public Utilities Municipal Utilities Commission and Library Board. On a personal note, I've got to say that I served with Scott on the Utilities Commission and he was not only very knowledgeable and conscientious at that job, he was also a genuinely good person. Michelle, did you have anything to add at all to that?
I would just like to say Scott just had recently, um, joined the Library Board in January of this year, so he didn't have a lot of time on the board, but his time was, um, still impactful and it was... He was a great person to have on our board. And I knew Scott as a personal, on a personal level also and, yes, Scott was a very, very good guy and when I asked him to be on the board, he immediately said yes, of course. Public service was something he was dedicated to and he will be greatly missed.
Even though he was always really busy with his business, he was always ready to step in and do what needed to be done also. Randy?
Well...
Anything to add?
Yeah, it just, Scott was always looking out for Canyon. You, you know, different things and on the board, he never came unprepared. He was always looking into different things and was just a great guy, so.
Genuine person and genuinely fine man. And he is going to be greatly missed by a lot of us. And I guess there isn't really anything more that can be said beyond that at this point.
Mayor, one thing I was going to add real quick, last week, the Biggie County Economics Development, the RD, recognized Canyon egg service for their, um, service and, um, benefits, contribution to the Canyon area economy, um, which included, you know, Scott and his partner, um, Danny Benson. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge them and, you know, thank them for their continued service to our community.
So, we have Carolyn Jackson from Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities here to do the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Carolyn Jackson and I'm an attorney lobbyist at firm Clarity Hood and we represent Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. Now, Canyon was a member of the coalition years ago and we would love to have it back. This year, we're making a really big pitch for two things. One is for local government aid and that's our, we're primarily focused, but we also want to lobby to get more city street aids for cities under 5,000. And so, we're making a big reach out to previous members and to new cities under 5,000. See if you can come join us and help us get some more money through your coppers. The Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities represents approximately 85, I think the number might have gone up to 87, but I didn't double check before, because we've been getting new members this fall. And over half of our members are cities under 5,000. And the coalition exists to lobby on behalf of greater Minnesota cities. At the capital, city of Minneapolis has a team of lobbyists. City of St. Paul has a team of lobbyists, metro cities have lobbyists. And nobody is there to speak on behalf of greater Minnesota cities. So when statewide programs get put together, greater Minnesota historically was lucked out. And so, we formed the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities to lobby to make sure that state funds are spread evenly across the state. We lobby on behalf, uh, on five issue areas. One is sort of general property taxing, so LGA, multi-government aid, property tax relief, annexation and land use. And we're really the only voice at the capital that talks about annexation at all. So it's a defensive thing that we do to make sure that your powers of annexation don't get cut off. And we lobby on behalf of the environment for cities. We lobby for economic development for cities. We lobby for transportation, which is my subject area. And we lobby for employment, well, actually, we have an employment and labor relations practice. I mean, a yearly seminar for cities to come and learn things about how to work on compensation and different employment practices. Um, in the last few years, local government aid has been a big issue. In 2013, it's the one issue that all of our cities have in common. And in 2013, the governor proposed raising money. We've been fighting through the 2000s to try and preserve local government aid. It seemed every time there was a deficit, the deficit was filled by cutting local government aid. So we've been fighting to get some of that back. The government, the governor made a proposal in 2013 and he proposed 80 million new dollars, 80% of which went to the metro. And we said, whoa, 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 wait a minute, that's not fair. Uh, we've got to look at this formula that you've got. And so, we raised the issue, we raised the sting, we put together a coalition of people. Us, the League of Minnesota Cities, Metro Cities, Minneapolis and St. Paul and a bipartisan panel of legislators. And we worked out a deal where the formula is very fair. Um, for comparison, the city of Canyon, under the governor's plan, would have topped out at $516,000. Currently, your local government aid is 528, almost 529,000 dollars. So that would have been a cut for you. Um, now you top out at $815,000, so you can continue to get increases in local government aid up to that under these, uh, the formula that we were able to work out. Um, we're lobbying for an increase, we'd like to get your local government aid up to 568,000. That's the 1992 level of funds at, or 2002, excuse me, lost time, sorry. It gets us back to 2002 levels, that's how much the aids and cuts, so we really like your help in doing that. Um, for transportation, last year, there was a big push at the capital, oh, this is going to be the greater Minnesota session. And nothing happened, nothing happened. And we sat down with legislators, especially in the House, we, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, and said, look, we've got to do something for small cities. And so, we sat down, we came up with a formula and we found a funding source and we took it to a couple legislators and they brought it and put it into a bill form. And the House research took our formula and tweaked it a little bit, made it better, actually. But, but for us, it would have just been, continued to be a conversation. Now, there is a statute that has aid for local, for city streets, for cities under 5,000. We've got a small amount of money, it's 12.5 million dollars statewide. We'd like to lobby next year to get that increased to a dedicated funding source. It was a one-time thing last year. So we'd like a dedicated funding source and we'd like to double that. So I know you guys got a check in July and you'll get another one pretty soon, I think, if you haven't already. And we'd like to make that a permanent funding source to help you with your city streets. We also lobby for a program called Quarters of Commerce, which is to get some of these roads that connect communities expanded to four lanes where there's a real need to get great moving. Highway 14 is one of those, Highway 23 comes from St. Cloud down to Wilmer. It's a highway expansion program that we helped to create and we'd like to get a permanent funding source for that as well. Um, for economic development, we lobby for broadband and we lobby for the Greater Minnesota Business Development Infrastructure Program. Our public infrastructure program is BDPI, that's what we call it, it's not such a mouthful. And that's a program that we helped to create that gets grants from the state for communities where you can, we get a grant for half of the cost of a sewer cost or for a road to help with your economic development. If you can bring in a business and you need to expand sewers or expand the roads or other public infrastructure to bring that business in, there's money available from the state and we lobby for that. Um, we've got a program for job training and workforce housing in some of these communities where there are jobs and they just simply can't have enough housing. We need to get some market inequality evened out so that there's enough financial incentive to build housing for some of these communities where they just simply, you build a 200,000, you know, $2 million building and its market value, as soon as it's closed, is one and a half million dollars. So we need to help bridge the gap for some of our communities. So those are some of the issues that we work for, we love to talk to our members and hear what the issues are. Uh, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities is really unique at the capital in that we are really a proactive lobbying experience. So there are a number of advocacy groups, sit and listen and then give a report back, this is happening at the capital. We actually go out and make things happen. We draft legislation, we find offers, we bring in testifiers, we see the bill all the way through the process, get it introduced and passed through committee and onto the floor and into the governor's hands. It's a lot of work and it takes a team to do it. I think in your handout, you can see some of the work we've done on local government aid. And one of the other things that we do is we prepare handouts for legislators that have, we have analysts on staff, who when these, some of these financial things come through, the formulas can be really complicated. And so, we have an analyst who runs the formula to make sure that our cities are well represented and get their share of money. We have a lobby day every year, this next one will be in March. And we have our members and we train our members, sometimes we have a new person come on the city council who's never been at the capital. It's nice to get a little training on how to talk to your legislator and how to get them to focus on what the meetings of your city are. And we set up the meetings and get you all trained and ready to go for that. We also have a couple of events. Uh, we have a summer conference, last year it was in Duluth, this next year it's going to be in Austin. It alternates between north and south in Minnesota. And we all get together and hear what's happened with the capital and what the issues are that we all share. This year, our fall conference is going to be in Alexandria and we're going to sit and set our legislative agenda for the following year. And, uh, and then in March will be our Legislative Action Day. So for the city of Canyon, because you're past members, uh, we would offer a coming back membership at a 50% cost of full dues, that would be $1,919. The next year, if you decide to stay with us, would go up to 75%. And then the third year would be a full dues and that would be $3,838 a year. The more voices we have in Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, the more impact we have at the capital. And it really is so important to get as many voices as we can asking for things like local government aid and talking about the impact of some of these state policies on cities in greater Minnesota, or in greater Minnesota. So with that, I will stand up for questions and I really hope that you'll join us, thank you. Do we have any questions?
Well, yes.
Okay.
What would you say is the big differentiation between Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities and the League of Minnesota Cities, except that you, the safe breed, are outside of the metro?
Well, you know, the League is an umbrella organization and they have a lot of different issues and they represent the entire city. So what we find is that they're not going to choose between their members. If there's a conflict between how a program will affect greater Minnesota versus how a program would affect, um, the metro, nobody's there to stand up and say, hey, greater Minnesota needs to get its, its fair share. And that's the role that we play. We're also a little bit more aggressive. Um, we support a lot of what the League does and we work with them, but we're not afraid to go out and use our own legislation and we like to do that quite a bit and to make sure that something happens. So whereas the League is a, is an umbrella organization and covers a lot of different people, we can say, this is a program that will help greater Minnesota and we're going to see it start to finish. And if the League can help us and if we can work with them, that's wonderful and we do. But if it's something that's going to be specific to greater Minnesota, we're going to be working on that probably on our own. Well, we'd like to get help, but, um, but we'll make sure that it gets done whether or not there are others to help us. Does that answer your question?
Getting there, and your de- and your definition of greater Minnesota, am I correct in thinking that you're referring to everything that's not Rochester, Duluth, or the metro?
No, it's, it's a legal definition, no, it's not just small cities. It's, it's Duluth and Rochester are members of Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. The legal definition is the cities that are outside the county area governed by the Met Council. So everything that's outside the Met Council, we consider to be greater Minnesota. And so, yes, Duluth and Rochester are members of the Coalition, but half of our members are cities under 5,000.
Is that be based upon population wise or?
It is, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's population based. And also, I, I think once you get into the bigger cities, it's a little bit different, but for the small cities, it's definitely, we don't want to overburden small cities if they pay...
So let's say like Duluth and Rochester, what you mentioned, what do they pay?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, but they, they pay a lot more than this, so. But it's, it's balanced so that the amount of, and I believe it's primarily of, and, you know, I joined, I joined the coalition in January, so, and I'm not the executive director, so I don't know how it's exactly set. But it's, it's mostly based on population and it's fair for small cities. And I can get back to the, the more precise answer in the morning.
Are there any metrics we could use to decide here how money is of value to us?
Well, you, we've already been invaluable to you by giving you small city street aid, okay? So that wouldn't have happened but for us. So we got you some money for your cities and I do. I'll be honest, when I put my materials together today, there was a typo in what I was working on and the, the population was 5,200, so I'm like, oh, I'm not going to look at the small city street aid. But I believe it's probably about $18,000 we've already gotten. So you can say it's already paid for. And what we'd like to do, if we're effective, and this is why we're reaching out to cities, because at the capital, more voices, more power you have. And we want to raise your local government aid from 528,000 to 569,000. So if we're successful, we will bring you $40,000 a year more right away and that's, we'll pay for it. Um, and if, we're the ones who are driving the bus on raising local government aid this year. That's really our issue and we're going to be pushing this very hard. And if we're successful, it will cover more than the cost of membership for the city of Canyon. So that would be the metric, I mean, we, like I said, we've already provided money for you, so it's, in a sense, already paid for. Um, and if we can get a permanent funding source for the small cities, that's again... Mark, do you know the amount of money that we were able to get for the city of Canyon?
For, um, highway?
For the street aid, the small city street aid that came and would have been half of the amount that came in, in July. But I'm guessing it was about $19,000.
Yeah, I was going to say like 20, 24,000.
Yeah.
I, I can't say for sure.
So, you know, that would have been half of what you'll get overall. And if we can double that amount, again, I can't guarantee success at the capital, but you, I can guarantee failure and that's by not showing up. So it's not, it was not... So it's not, it's not a charitable place because you have to work for many things out of legislation. And it's hard work. It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort to get help from the state government. And that's what we're here to do on your behalf.
Okay, so we paid zero to get all that stuff done. And you were.
Well, and you know, that's, the thing is, the more members we have, the more effective we are. So by adding your voice, you give us that extra to get, be effective at the Capitol. And so if you join, then you can come to the Capitol and you can talk to your legislator and say, look, this is something that's really important to our city. They're not going to hear that otherwise. Going to the Capitol is not an easy thing. And, you know, you can get in a car and drive up and go, but what day do you go? What time do you arrive? And one of the things that we do is we have real-time updates for our members. So when there's a bill that's going up in a committee, we can send an email to our members and say, today is the day. Here's who you called, here's the phone number, here's the email address, this is what the message is. And of course you can tailor it, but it's real-time. It's not, okay, it's June, the legislature's over, here's what happened. It's real-time communication with our members so that they can be as effective as possible in advocating at the Capitol, as well as us being there, but we can get your voice there as well. So that's something else that differentiates us.
Well, it would be nice to know that our dues went, hey, this gentleman's lunch or a trip and that was the goal, it was crucial in order to get the.
And that would be illegal in Minnesota.
Yeah.
It would be, actually.
Yeah.
You had mentioned that this is supposed to be a session for Greater Minnesota and in the end, nothing happened. But just briefly, why?
Well, one thing did happen and that was the creation of the small city street aid. That's the only bright spot in what happened. Primarily what happened is about halfway through the session, and we're actually in February, the report came out about the state budget that we had over a billion-dollar surplus. The Republicans had one way of wanting to spend that, the Democrats had another way of wanting to spend that, and it all fell apart because they just couldn't get it together in the end. And so there was a lot of good discussion, but basically the Republicans said, we want to do a two-billion-dollar tax break. And the Democrats said, we don't want to do that. And because they couldn't get together, there was no tax bill. And there was a lot of flurry and scurry at the end. And the governor said, I want to have universal three K. And so we had three different parties with three different visions about how to spend that surplus. The conversations have been going on all summer and all fall and it looks like, you know, we can continue to advocate and one thing, broadband, is one of the things that we were lobbying for. And the conversation over the summer has gone, escalated hugely on demonstrating the need for communities. I know in Goodview County, it's only twenty-three point two percent of Goodview County, means the basic definition of broadband service. So it's a big issue all across the state. But it's by having that conversation, I think we'll be able to get some things to, we'll get that discussion about no tax bill, no transportation bill off the table and say, okay, now let's get down to business and actually get some of these things passed. But that was, it was a very big philosophical difference and they've been working hard to bridge that. And we've been working hard, putting a little pressure on the newspapers and we can, it's another program that we have, is we have a very strong media service. So we have good relationships with statewide newspapers and the editorial boards. And so we make sure that issues of Greater Minnesota are talked about in the newspapers and that's something that also takes work to do. And we have a media person on staff who helps with that.
So in other words, what happens is you win a few or you lose a few, but at least you win the seat?
That's right, that's right. And if you don't show up, you're guaranteed to lose.
Yeah.
So I have a question sort of along the lines of the mayor's question, but probably going to be a little more pointed question. This is a follow-up, but what is the difference between, or what do you feel is the advantage, I guess you could say, of your organization, the Coalition, versus the Minnesota Association of Small Cities?
Well, the small cities, you know, they show up and they monitor a lot. They don't do, they don't draft legislation, they don't get the authors, they don't work it through. Getting legislation passed is a lot of work. And you can sit and go to meetings and monitor and tell, and put newsletters together and a lot of organizations do that. And I know the Small Cities Association does that and they do it well. But they're not getting legislators to author legislation. They're not working it through the committee system. They're not finding other people to sign on to it. They're not getting votes and making sure and talking to leadership that the bill gets passed. And that all takes a lot of time and a lot of work to get that happen. So what we have is, and we also have, like I said, media services. We send out real-time information for lobbying. So it's a much more muscular type of operation than just simply monitoring and reporting back, which, there's nothing wrong with that, but it is a lot cheaper to just monitor.
Well, thank you and we will take vendor advisement, but I'm not going to be out checking to you right now.
Okay, well, thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we move on to engineering. Update on First Street Reconstruction Project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, you authorized us to prepare feasibility report on improvements on First Street from Red Wing Avenue to Bulleus Street. And good progress is being made in the report and this video will be completed in approximately two weeks or in other terms roughly by the end of the month. So in consideration of the project schedule and discussion with the administrator, we thought we would bring the opportunity to the council that at tonight's meeting, we could call for the public hearing, which just sets the time and date of the hearing and in between now and next month, that the regularly scheduled council movement and the public hearing will be held. We can have the report completed, hold a work session with the council to review the contents of the report in advance and then be prepared for the public hearing on November tenth. And doing that will offer, will allow us then to prepare the final plan specifications and be ready for a bid date roughly in February of two thousand sixteen. So in your package tonight, we have a memo essentially outlining that and as well as a resolution that staff has prepared to authorize calling the public hearing, authorize the notifications to be mailed out to the properties within the project area and also publish the notification or notice of the public hearing in the official newspaper.
Well, I think that's fair to give these homeowners as much time as possible with the things that comes out. And I like your idea of bringing it in early and getting started.
So the thing with the public hearing to keep in mind is all three, if all three blocks are included, that if the council decides after the hearing, after the feasibility study, a little further down the road here, and not very long, but in kind of the next step of this in the next month, that they want to just do a block or two blocks or whatever, that you can still do that. This is just the whole area that's being looked at. Doesn't mean you have to do it all this year, or you could do it, you know, depending on how it can shake out, so.
Correct, but since the report is being paired on the entire distance from Red Wing to Bulleus, the hearing will be held to present the findings on that entire area. And then council will have the option to choose whatever portion of that project they'll want to pursue.
If we did part of it one year and decided to do part of it later, is that a part of another hearing?
I believe it would because we would have to update the costs and update the estimated assessments. And then we have to, per chapter four twenty-nine of state statute, hold an initial improvement hearing before you can actually order the project.
So do we have a motion to approve resolution twenty fifteen to eighteen? So move. Seven. On bidder?
Aye.
Close. Motion passed. Update on fire facility project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your package, you have a memo from us. At the last meeting, a special meeting, where Architect Corey Gruntum was, was in attendance, there was discussion on, overall magnitude of the project, spoke of the project, trying to reach some consensus on what size a project should be. And we had very good discussion at the last meeting and we walked away with some good progress towards having public meetings so we can keep this project going. One of the things that Corey had said during that last meeting is, if you recall, is that the preparation of the bidding documents, the entire design that will result in the bidding documents is about a four-month process. And Corey and I were talking after the meeting and we were looking at the estimated schedule and we wanted to discuss with council to see if you wish to consider getting the design process started. Obviously, since that last special council meeting, you did close on the full prep site, so you now have a real piece of property to consider moving this project forward with. And the design phase consists of three main phases. There's the preliminary schematic design that's done first, then the design development, and then, once that's done, the actual preparation of the detailed documents that will be released to the bidders for them to prepare their bids and submit them to the city. The schematic design will develop the information that's needed for those public meetings that are going to be held in November. Now, if you recall, in August, the council authorized us to do the activity necessary just for that public meeting, to put together renderings and a preliminary cost estimate. The schematic design would do that, but it would develop that information further so the information presented to the public would be more developed, more accurate, it would be further along than if we just simply focused on getting ready for the meeting. The other thing it does is it saves us time in the project schedule when we look at that four-month design phase. If we started design tonight, you know, October thirteenth, four months is going to put us out to the middle of February. Then you have a twenty-one-day advertising period before you can take bids, so that would give us a bid date of roughly the middle of March. If we wait until after the public meetings, which are scheduled for, or anticipated to be in mid-November, to start the design process, we probably wouldn't be starting design until roughly December first, which puts us out with the four-month design period and a twenty-one-day advertising period, puts us out to a bid date in around May, early May. Now, historically bidding climate is better to get our project offered bid earlier than later, so we wanted to review this with you and see, you certainly have the option to pursue whatever project schedule you prefer if you're not comfortable initiating that first phase of schematic design yet. But we wanted to discuss it with you and talk about project schedule and see if we wanted to start, if the city wanted to start the schematic design phase at this time, which would help keep us on target for a roughly a mid-March bid date. It would also help with the development of that material for the public meeting. And if you recall, the, I brought the memo from August, the cost that you authorized for the preliminary information for the project of meetings was sixty-eight hundred dollars. The schematic design phase is estimated at fifty thousand dollars, but that seventy-eight hundred dollars worth of work would be included in the fifty thousand dollars. So really, it's a, the net increase in authorization to do the schematic design phase is forty-three thousand two hundred dollars. So that's what we wanted to discuss tonight to just have a conversation about project schedule and the design process and see if council wants to get the design started at this time or if you'd rather wait until after the public meetings are held.
I still haven't seen the final, kind of final design. I mean, right now, we've got this lower applied picture and we're trying to fine tune it so we can get it priced down, but right now, we're kind of giving a blank check and saying, well, whatever it is, it is. I won't go, I won't go wrong with that.
Well, it's not blank, it's forty-three thousand dollars.
This would be, have to be a not-to-exceed.
Yes, we gotta, we gotta have a cap, like we did with the sewer project because we know what happens.
And we've talked to him about that and he doesn't have an issue with that. What you've seen so far at like at the work session is a preliminary, kind of a floor layout, floor sketch plan, for lack of a better description. And in order to get this, you know, kind of to the next phase here, this is, better or otherwise, I mean, this is pretty much falling into line if you look at what, for commercial buildings, what per-square-footage design costs are, this is, this is, I don't see where this is that out of line. And it's, as a next step, you know, this is, in order to get the drawings that are needed, then the going to the plans and specs, this is, you know, the next step in a typical process like this. And as long as it, you know, it should definitely be set up with a not-to-exceed figure. In order to get what we need, well, to show the public, I mean, this goes far beyond that, but, you know, to get the exteriors and better layout of the site plan, of the floor plan, as I showed in my memo, this is, you know, the next step that needs to happen. If we're going to keep moving ahead here, this, you know, unfortunately, it is kind of tight. I mean, we're mid-October, but in order to try to get this thing bid, if the council wants to go that route, you know, yet this winter, then we have to keep moving ahead with it, so.
Well, to quote something that I've heard in relation here, in relation to other projects, we've talked about this and talked about this and talked about this. My feeling is, if we've got the land, it's time to move on it now. And in light of that, I would move that we authorize not to exceed another forty-three thousand two hundred dollars to prepare these design plans and prepare for a hearing.
What kind of design plans are we giving?
Well, now, after the work session, you gave Corey a number.
They.
A basic number and you gave him a basic principle of what kind of building you want, which is what he said he needed. So he knows he's got to stay under this price with this kind of building. So he's to be able to do that and be somewhat close to what you guys were hoping for.
And essentially, I mean, what we've done to this point, where as we've had the committee meetings, we've done the space analysis and come up with the concept for the building that the city is aiming towards. But there really hasn't been, Congressman Barstman, you're really, you're correct, there really hasn't been any design work done yet. And that had, no design work has been authorized at this point and you really can't get any design work done until the city wants to take that next step and initiate that design process. And then the design process, in architectural, is a little bit different than just a straight engineering, like a road project. There is what's called the schematic design phase where they start to take that concept and refine it into an actual design. It doesn't lock the city or the city into any, you know, set square footage or any set cost. It's the process so that you can get it fine-tuned down to the point where then you can get in, fine into the design development, which is phase two, where you can start to actually lock things in. And so that when you get to the final phase of design, which is the plans and specifications, you actually prepare the detailed plans and specifications that go out to the bidders. So this first phase of schematic design that the architect has talked about, wouldn't say that we're definitely going to have a building that's two million dollars or two point two million dollars, two point five million dollars. It would, it would start to take that concept that we've developed and fine tune them into design, which will include getting information ready for the public review meetings. But certainly at the end of the schematic design phase, there would be room to continue to refine that design through the design development until it's actually agreed upon and then the final plans and specifications are actually put together for release to the bidders.
So when this comes back, it could still be tweaked?
Oh, certainly.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Or it could be written.
Does it cost more? Well, each phase of the design will have a cost associated with it to keep the project moving forward. And that's why, at this time, we just wanted to have a discussion about the first phase so that we can get the preliminary design going. And we would come back once that's completed and review the findings of that and then request authorization to move into the design development phase. When that's completed, request authorization to actually prepare the plans and specifications.
So what happens if we're not satisfied after this first phase or the public isn't satisfied? The forty-three thousand is down the drain and we start over? Or what happens?
Well, you're generally not going to start over. If you, in saying broadly speaking, that, you know, you get a lot of feedback about, just say, for example, the number of doors for, you know, just discussion saves. And you ask Corey, okay, go back and change it to reflect four doors instead of five, let's just say. I mean, that's a minor. I mean, that's a minor, more or less a minor revision in the process. I mean, Joe, do you think, when there's minor revisions in the floor plan, normally that's kind of built into this?
Well, and that happens all the time in architectural projects. There's always, there's always input from the, from the client, which causes, you know...
But we don't get charged.
...generations of the, yeah.
I don't want a committee of notice to say that every single thing won't get charged, but I think minor things are normally kind of built into this process that it's not uncommon that they want a window moved, or they want this or that. That's not a major thing for them to do.
Right, and that's why this is the schematic design. It allows the input and the feedback and the evolution of the design process. Until you get to the point where you start to lock things down in Phase 2, you know, and then actually prepare the detailed plans in Phase 3 of the design. The only way that the cost of the design phase of, the design fee of Phase 1 is really down the drain is if the city were inside, they didn't want to move forward with the project. Because at that point, it would be... If the city ultimately wants to have a project, whether it's, you know, 2016 or 2017, whenever we can get the project bid and constructed, this phase of design will be necessary. And that's why we wanted to discuss with you this time, because we know the cost is more than you've spent on anything else in this project so far, other than the land itself. But if we can get the project bid two months earlier as a result, in March rather than May? In rough, in rough terms, if you're talking a $2 million building, $43,000 is roughly 2% of that. So if we can get bids that are 2% better by getting that bid two months earlier, the first phase of the design will pay for itself in that savings of the construction cost. That's why we just wanted to have a discussion that we, obviously, you have the choice to, if you're not comfortable and not ready to move forward yet, you certainly don't have to. But we just wanted to have this discussion to talk about the opportunity to get the design phase going, to get an earlier bid date.
You know, it's funny you mention it, it's 2% a big cost, whereas last work session, 2%, doesn't mean anything. I mean, that's, that's a small savings, you know. I was very kind of appalled when you guys said, "Well, it's only 2% we're saving here, it's only 2% we're saving here." It don't, it don't mean anything. About 2% here, 2% here, 5% here adds up. So like I say, I was, I was really kind of, I don't know what I would say, last meeting. I didn't dare say anymore because I...
And I was just referencing...
Maybe something shoved down our throat, and I don't like it.
I was just referencing the 2%, saying that it is, in the terms of the total project cost, it's relatively small. And that's, that's the risk that the city would be taking right now to authorize. The first phase of design would be roughly 2% of the estimated construction cost. But if that risk, taking it now, saves money in the construction bids that come in, that risk has benefit at the end. But we're certainly not asking the council to do anything they're not comfortable with. It's just, we wanted to have a discussion because this is the opportunity to do that if we wanted to get the design started. Because after this, we won't have another regular council meeting until November 10. And that's four weeks of bidding time, potential bidding time at the back end of the project schedule that's lost.
And I, I've been, my motion is still on the table waiting for a second. We're discussing it. I might throw a clinker into this, but Fred, I'd kind of like to have a little more of a clarification on what you're thinking overall. We're following with Corey, and I'm comfortable with what he's saying. But I'd like to have the opportunity for you to explain so that we can understand your phase of it. How would you go about doing this?
Because the idea that it's not so much what the building costs and what our payments are going to be. And the payments is what taxpayers, I mean, okay, we're giving this building to pay the salary tax, and our taxpayers would pay even less. Bottom line is, we're going to get less money from that town, so the taxpayers got to pick this up. So we got to overcome, you know, the whole picture. Two and a half million is way over what I would even consider. And I brought a few ideas where we could save some money, you know? And it was only 2% here, you're only going to save 2% here, you're only going to save 2%, 5% here. I'm sorry, it adds up. But, so, what I'm getting at tonight is, let's, what is, what kind of building are we looking at now that we kind of rejected the last time?
I'm still kind of lost in a way, but I understand where you're getting at. Yes, I've sat there and thought about this too. I know it's coming out of my pocket as well as everybody in the, in the area, and that. But one question that just popped up, like you, that a person mentioned was, "Well, isn't it building over there 5,000 square feet, the fire hall now?" And I said, "I don't know for sure." He says, "Well, you got all the trucks in there now, why don't you just damn jam the new ones in there? Build another one for 5,000 square feet, and you got yourself a fire hall." Well, how are you going to answer that?
Make it fit.
Well, I said, "There's another truck coming." I said, "There's some of them, we're trying to, to take it all and put it all in the same building in the same area now with it." And that was one of the questions that was asked. Why, why are you spending all this money? First of all, Fred, I understand what you're saying, and I can't really repeat on it, but you've got to have a little more substance. What do you think is a, what do you think we could build a fire hall for? How big do you want? How all of these things that we're going? We're going with individuals that are, this is their likelihood. And we shouldn't even be talking about this fire hall right now. That should have been long gone, and we should have been paying it off. We're still sitting here, and if we don't go ahead with this thing, it's going to be put off, put off, and put off. And it's going to cost more every time.
Four acres that we can run out for 265 bucks a year. Building another four acres that have been ran out for 265 a year.
Put some goats on there.
See, that's, that's another thing, you know, it's been, it has been dragged down. It should have been dragged down because how long has this committee been going? And it would never...
About two years, Fred. How many years was it prior to that, that there was two more committees or whatever? John, I think you were on it, were you correct? And you can go back from there. What happened then? What was the stall at that particular time? Why didn't it get done? It didn't get done. So some of us are going to have to take, and take a beating by get it done.
We're going to get it done, but we want the best thing for the...
That's what I'm asking, what do you want, Fred?
Let's not just rush in because we got to get everything all set, and it's a deadline. We got to get this done, we got to get this done. I want, I want, I'm not satisfied, the guy shows us the big picture, and this is going to cost us $2.5 million, and we know it, we can't sell to the public a $2.5 million building.
But what are we going to come up with then?
That was capped at $2.5.
My understanding is that this drawing that if we're going to be paying $43,000 for is a more refined drawing that we can now take and say, "Oh, okay, let's take this door and this door off. Okay, this is what it looks like now. Let's, let's do this here. Oh, okay, that saves us $5,000. This is what it looks like now." And that's what we're doing the drawing for. Is so that we have something concrete that we can now say, "Here's where we're going to save money, here's where we're going to save money, here's where we're going to save money, and this will still work for our fire department, and it'll work for our budget." But without something like that, that we can all look at and say, "Okay, let's do this, let's do this, let's do this," we're still up in the air.
Without asking that question, is that what we're getting?
Well, and that's, that's what I want to make sure the council understands, is that there's not a deadline and it's not a drop dead-ish year. You did authorize preparation of materials for the public meetings that are coming up. But at that time, we still didn't have an idea really of what size the building should be, or, you know, that, that didn't start to clarify until after this last special meeting. So we still have authorization, we could still just put that information together, get it ready for the public meetings, and then after the public meetings, we could start the design process at that point.
Okay, but is this the drawing that is going to let us make some refinements?
Correct.
You know, in which case, the sooner the better.
Yeah, that's why we wanted to say, we, we've got to get the information ready for the public meeting regardless. But at the same time, we can get the preliminary design going, which does, yeah, it does allow input from, from the city, and does allow modifications and...